Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I think today I broke my own consistency for being on time, but I'll thank everyone for being here. I know the hour has come. A quorum of counsel is present. This meeting will now come to order. I will ask all members to please take your seats. I will ask for all visitors to please put your cell phones on silent, take all sidebar conversations out the chambers. I do note for the record, today to my left, we have Office of Civil Affairs, Sheriff's Department, and Philadelphia Police Department that were working with us today during our council session. At this moment, I'm going to ask for Pastor Nicholas Christian from Philippians Baptist Church, who will offer a word of prayer for us, to please join us at the podium. He's here on behalf of Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Good morning. I greet you today in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Certainly want to thank Councilman Phillips for the invitation to come and share with you in the word of prayer this morning. Let us look to the Lord in prayer. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, you God who has brought us this far along the way, thou who hast by thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in your path, we pray. Gracious and merciful God, we come boldly before your throne of grace this morning, first and foremost, to say thank you. For the truth is, God, even as we stand in these chambers, even as we stand in a world that is rife with dissonance politically and morally, even as we stand in a world that is rife with suffering publicly and privately, even as we stand in a place and in a world that has constituents who are encumbered by their living conditions locally, nationally, and globally, the reality is, in spite of all that is on the outside and going on on the inside, God, we still, every one of us owe you a thank you. And so this morning, God, before we raise a gavel to call any order, this morning, God, before we call a motion and so move, this morning, God, before we petition or we deliberate any further, God, we want to make a decision. We know that even if we had 10,000 tongues, it wouldn't be enough to say thank you, but we also know that gratitude is a choice. And so this morning, God, we want to make a choice, that before we move any further, we open up our mouths in this chamber and we cry out, "Thank you, God, for your goodness. Thank you, God, for your mercy. Thank you, God, for your grace. Thank you, God, for your faithfulness. Thank you, God, for being God." But we also stand before you today, God, welcoming you in this place. We welcome you, God, to move by your spirit, to move by your might. We welcome you, God, into these chambers, into our lives, into this city, to throw your weight around and to have your own way. I know that our leaders have come and they have a plan for how this meeting should go, and there are constituents who are present who have desires for how this meeting will take place, God. But I remember the words of the prophet Jeremiah in Jeremiah, Chapter 29, Verses 11, that reminded us that you know the plans that you have for us, and those plans are plans to prosper us and not to harm us, plans to give us hope and to give us a future. And so today, God, we welcome you into this place, not that our plan would go forth, not that our will would be done, not that our words would make rain, but God, we welcome you into this place, that your plans would prosper. Have your way in this place today, God. We stand before you today, petitioning that this meeting today would be fruitful. Sometimes serving people can be tiring and cumbersome. Sometimes when we see the good that we've done and take a glance at the good that still needs to be done, we can be discouraged, God. But I pray right now that you would cover every leader in this chamber and under the sound of my voice and across this city with a fresh anointing that would make serving your people easy and effective. I pray that where they are weak and fatigued, that you would hold them up on every leaning side and give them the strength that they need to continue on. God, I pray this morning that they would come to know in this chamber on this day, the promise that those who do not grow weary in well-doing will receive a harvest if they feign it not. My prayer today, God, that it would be harvest season in this chamber today, God. I'm praying that your word would come true. You said that never again would seed, time, and harvest fail. And so I'm praying today that every seed that's sown in these chambers, God, that it would bring forth a harvest today, God, that it would take root and that it would bear fruit, and that it would bear not just any kind of fruit, but good fruit today, God. Let the seeds sown in these chambers today bring forth the fruit of righteousness today, God. Let the seeds sown in this chamber bring forth the fruit of holiness today, God. Let the seeds sown in these chambers bring forth the fruit of educational equity. Let it bring forth the fruit, God, of senior housing for those who are older. Let it bring forth the fruit for housing for those experiencing homelessness, for relief for those experiencing poverty. Let it bring forth the fruit of safety for our children. Let it bring forth the fruit of justice and let it flow like a river and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. Whatever you do today, God, I just asked today, we just touch and agree today, that you would make sure that this city, that its leaders, that its constituents, if nothing else, would be fruitful in all that we do. And we pray these things in Jesus' name, believing that it will be done. And let the people of God say amen, amen, and amen again.
The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December the 5th, 2024. The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 5th, 2024, be approved.
It has been moved in propriety second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 5th, 2024, stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks, who's not here at this moment. The chair recognizes Minority Whip, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Blessings, Mr. President. We do request a leave of absence for the minority leader at this time.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council, and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in propriety second that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today, should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking the time to join us as we attend the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsy Lazzada.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to welcome my daughter Alexis Lopez, who's visiting us all the way from San Antonio, Texas. This is the first time she comes to visit us in legislative.
What little Ketsy at Stan, there you go.
She watches us from home every week, and so we took advantage that she was here to come visit us and watch it in person. Thank you all.
I think we also had the presence of Marvin Frazier. Where's Mr. Frazier? Please stand. Where is he at? Let's give him a real big round of, yeah, chant. I think that's the guest of Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young. Is that correct? Let's give Jeffrey J. Young a round of applause for keeping the life and legacy of our champ, the legendary Joe Frazier. Let's give him a round of applause for that. Thank you, sir, for honoring such a worthy champion in the city of Philadelphia. He did put Ali on the canvas first, though, but that's a different conversation. We'll talk about some other time. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity, who will present a resolution commending Officer Colleen Donnelly for her heroic actions and quick thinking in a moment of crisis. Would Officer Donnelly and those accompanying her please join the council member at the podium? Joining Councilmember Jim Harity will be Councilmember Driscoll, Councilmember O'Rourke, and Councilmember Phillips. The chair recognizes, we also see Councilmember Squiller joining us.
Yep.
Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson joining us.
That's right.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good morning, everyone. I believe it's still morning, right? Before we honor Officer Donnelly, I wanted to briefly extend my sincere appreciation to two of our own who were trying to hide out when it comes to this. After, you know, you always find things out after you start to do something. And after talking to Officer Donnelly, I found out that two of our own were actually also one of the first people on the scene, and they helped in securing the scene by directing traffic because the light pole was knocked down when Officer Donnelly was given medical attention. So I'd like to please have Andre Delvalle, who was a former staffer in council and now is the Deputy Director of Legislative Affairs for Mayor Sherrell Parker, and Sean McGonigal, Legislative Assistant to our own Councilman Squiller. Please stand up so we can recognize you guys. Hello, it's Sean. Stand up. Where's Andre? Hey. They didn't want me to embarrass them. Good luck. All right. And with that, we will get started on our officer commending Officer Colleen Donnelly for her heroic actions and quick thinking in a moment of crisis. Whereas, on the night of November 21st, 2024, a hit-and-run accident occurred on Market Street and Juniper Streets near City Hall, where a suspected DUI driver struck two pedestrians and causing serious injuries. And whereas Officer Colleen Donnelly was stationed at City Hall and acted with exceptional bravery and professionalism during the aftermath of the crash, becoming the first and only officer on the scene for 20 minutes. And
Whereas Officer Donnelly maintained her composure and acted swiftly to provide lifesaving aid, including the makeshift creation of a tourniquet for one of the victims, all while keeping the area secure and keeping the area safe. And
And I want to add, we're always seeing Colleen's smiling face when you come in or leave City Hall is a great chaser to all of us. But whereas her quick thinking and calm demeanor exemplifies the critical role of law enforcement in ensuring public safety, making split-second decisions that resulted in saving a life. And
Whereas Officer Donnelly's actions on the night of November 21st, 2024, reflect her dedication not only to law enforcement, but to the Philadelphia community, which she has served for 20 years, and now therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that Officer Colleen Donnelly be honored for her exemplary public service and dedication to the safety of the City of Philadelphia, and further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Officer Colleen Donnelly, who we all know and love, as evidence of the sincere admiration and respect of this legislative body. Congratulations.
Just want to recognize also the presence of her parents. Her father is also a retired police officer, so it's in the blood, as you can see.
The chair recognizes Officer Donnelly, who hails from the great part of Philadelphia known as South Philly. You now say your remarks.
I just want to say thank you for everyone and all the help that everyone helped me that night. It was, everybody pitched in. We all worked as a team, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for this award.
deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Thank you, Mikel. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Plan and Commission on the following bills: Bill Number 240966, 240968, 240969, 240970, 240971, 240972, 241054 (approval with amendments), 241061, 241062, 241081, and 241083. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution for introduction today. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing January 2025 as a national mentoring month and honoring the contributions of Philadelphia's mentoring organizations.
This bill will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Today I offer two privileged resolutions and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged and non-privileged resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution renaming the 1500 block of South 17th Street Carl Van Wilson Way in honor of Deacon Carl Van Wilson, Sr., for his extraordinary leadership, entrepreneurship, and unwavering commitment to his church and community.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated on its 111th Founder's Day.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on its 105th Founder's Day.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could be indulged, I messed up. I was thinking that on final passes calendar, I would be able to speak to what this resolution that we're going to pass, but the person that we're recognizing has a lunch appointment and won't be here. So if I could take a moment, all members, you know that the most difficult job in our office is the job of the scheduler.
Amen.
Amen. And the reason that is, is because they make every excuse in the world for us having to reschedule and redo and
You tell the secrets.
Yeah. And when they want to be mad at me, they wind up being mad at her. But add an extra amount of responsibility for being our office manager in our district and home offices, you will then know that for the past decade, I've had the services of Ms. Crystal Tan. Would you please stand and those with you? I would also, she getting flowers. So I would also say, Mr. President and colleagues, that she has kept me straight. She has kept my schedule. I am able to be in two places at one time, and I don't know how I transported to get there. But I want to thank her from the bottom of my heart for being a part of our office and value-added. I want to also say I would also, we getting, she getting flowers? So I would also say, Mr. President and colleagues, that she has kept me straight. She has kept my schedule. I am able to be in two places at one time, and I don't know how I transported to get there. But I want to thank her from the bottom of my heart for being a part of our office and value-added. I want to also say, never mess with a senior citizen. Because she will defend them with everything she has, and Lord be the guardian of her mouth.
Could y'all bring inside the rails? Bring in the rails. What's going on, family? She also hails from the great part of Philadelphia known as South Philly. You want to go and sit front of the podium, Councilmember Jones? You're welcome. That's what's up. How you doing today? Congratulations. What's going on, fam? Yes, oh, that's what's up.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President. Today I have one non-privileged resolution for introduction.
Thank you very much. Well, the Chief Clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution.
A non-privileged resolution also naming the 3900 block of Haverford Avenue between Lancaster Avenue and 40th Street Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Triangle to commemorate the location of his 1965 Freedom Now Rally.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Thank you for your leadership and sorry that your streak has been broken. I would like to introduce one privileged resolution today, and since nobody else has done it, I would like to wish my colleague to the right a very happy birthday. Happy birthday, colleague.
Give a round of applause. Happy birthday to Councilman Jamie Gortier. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Isabella Izzy Fitzgerald, a lifelong advocate and former state representative in the 203rd House District of Pennsylvania.
Before we refer this bill to our calendar, I want to ask that we all take a moment of silence and take a stand and honor the life of Liz, life of Ms. Izzy Fitzgerald. That resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the one bill and one privileged resolution?
An ordinance amending Chapter 10-400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Noise and Excessive Vibration by Prohibiting the Use of Gasoline-Powered Leaf Blowers Under Certain Terms and Conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Officer Bernard Bernie Turner, Badge Number 4544, for his exemplary service in light of his retirement from the Philadelphia Police Department.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilman Kati Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have no bills and no resolutions.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills and resolutions today.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks, who isn't here yet. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Council President, I have one privileged resolution on your behalf for Mr. Dick Allen. It's about time.
Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution? Thank you, Member Harity.
A privileged resolution honoring the extraordinary legacy and groundbreaking achievements of Richard Anthony Dick Allen, a Philadelphia Phillies legend and trailblazing African-American baseball player, as he receives his long overdue induction into the National Baseball Hall of Fame Class of 2025.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Good morning, Mr. President. I do have one privileged resolution to introduce.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing November 2024 as American Diabetes Month in support of those battling the disease and acknowledging the structural conditions that lead to disparities in affected populations and available care.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Triscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution urging the Federal Aviation Administration to investigate and further regulate the use of unmanned aircraft systems known as drones over private property after an increase of unidentified drone use in the greater Philadelphia area.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla.
No bills or resolutions today, Mr. President.
Councilmember O'Neal. Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions this week.
And Councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code to add a new chapter entitled Empowering Communities for Cultural Preservation and Community Controlled Development, and thereby defining the boundaries of the Chinatown Growth Initiative area, providing for and establishing the procedure for a right of first refusal for a land trust managed and operated by the Philadelphia Chinatown Development Corporation with regard to certain publicly-owned properties within the Chinatown Growth Initiative area, identifying certain properties subject to the right of first refusal, establishing use and stewardship requirements for the properties the land trust acquires, and authorizing the city to implement and enforce the requirements of the chapter, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. Good job. The next order of business is reports from committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Kathy Gilmore-Richardson for a report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole reports out eight bills and three resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the report?
The Committee of the Whole, to which were referred the following bills and resolutions. Bill Number 240966, an ordinance to grant the necessary, I'm sorry, the necessary authorizations for the city to help facilitate development, construction, and operation of a new arena for the Philadelphia 76ers professional basketball team and for other uses, including authorizing the commissioner of public property and other such city officials as may be appropriate on behalf of the city to enter into the following agreement and take the following actions. One, acquire fee simple title to all or portions of 1,001 to 1,025 Filbert Street, 1,001 through 1,019 Market Street, and 1025 Market Street together, the Market and Filbert Street properties; to acquire fee simple title to other parcels of land, aerial areas, and subsurface areas in the vicinity of Market Street and Filbert Street properties, including without limitation those areas reverting to the city or other parties in connection with the striking of certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street, the additional properties, and certain other nearby parcels and areas. Three, enter into a ground lease agreement, the lease with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development paid, under which the city would lease to paid all or a certain portion of the Market Street and Filbert Street properties and the additional properties, if any, and other parcels and subsurface areas the city now owns in the vicinity of those properties, all of which collectively will constitute the arena site. Four, join in or consent to sublease and development agreement, the sublease between paid and either CBL Arena LLC Arena Co., an entity affiliated with the Philadelphia 76ers LP, the 76ers, or another entity affiliated with the 76ers, under which Arena Co. or other 76ers-related entity would sublease the arena site and cause an arena to be constructed on it, including a multipurpose sports and entertainment facility, an ancillary accessory and related amenities, improvements, and infrastructure of the arena, and agree to other related conditions. Five, upon the expiration or termination of the sublease, where the circumstances set forth in the sublease convey fee simple title to the arena site to paid for disposition to Arena Co. Six, grant, accept, amend, relocate, and extinguish easements, agreements, conditions, covenants, and restrictions encumbering or benefiting the arena site, and any city-owned property adjacent to the arena site for the benefit of the arena site to facilitate construction and operation of the arena. Seven, enter into a direct operating covenants agreements among the 76ers paid in the city, under which the 76ers agree to play substantially all of their regular season and playoff games in the arena. And eight, take all necessary and appropriate to accomplish the intent and purpose of this ordinance under certain terms and conditions. End. Bill Number 240967, an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development of certain project-related services to promote, among other things, the growth and expansion of business, commerce, and tourism within the City of Philadelphia in connection with the development of a multipurpose sports and entertainment facility, including an arena to accommodate National Basketball Association games, and family entertainment, community, retail, and other uses, authorizing and approving the obligation of the city to pay in full when service, the service fee, and other amounts payable under the service agreement, and covenings to make necessary appropriations for such purposes, and authorizing city officials to take necessary or appropriate actions to accomplish the intent and purpose of the ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills and resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 240968, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Filbert Street from 10th Street to 11th Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240969, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating certain aerial portions of 10th Street between 11th Street and Filbert Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240970, an ordinance authorizing CBL Arena LLC and its successors in interest to construct, own, and maintain various rights-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of 1,001 through 19 Market Street, 1,025 Market Street, and 1,001 through 25 Filbert Street, Philadelphia, PA 19107, under certain terms and conditions. End. Bill Number 240971, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending relations relating to signs and creating an arena area within the center-city overlay, district overlay, and making related changes, including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with zoning rules for the proposed arena in center-city, and approving a master plan for the arena area, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240972, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revision of certain provisions of Section 14-906 entitled Market Street East Sign Regulations, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240973, an ordinance approving the amendment of a neighborhood improvement district in the area generally bounded by and including 11th Street to the west, Filbert Street to the north, 8th Street to the east, Market Street to the south, with the exception of certain condominium units at 801 Market Street condominium, not included in the district known as the Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District, to remove certain courses of such property generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, 10th Street on the east, 11th Street on the west, and Market Street on the south from such district in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act under certain terms and conditions. End. Resolution Number 240888, a resolution appointing Rick Carrion to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And Resolution Number 240889, a resolution appointing Howard Werzach to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And Resolution Number 240986, a resolution appointing Gary Brandeis to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills or resolutions to report from the Committee of the Whole, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore-Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, and... 10-4, these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore-Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the consideration of the resolutions that were just read into the record by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council.
With their second, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the resolutions just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Same next, 10-4. The motion carries. These resolutions will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Appropriations, to which was referred the following bill. Bill Number 241084, an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2024 from the General Fund from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Transportation Fund from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the Water Fund to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and to the Transportation Fund to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Appropriations, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports one bill with a favorable... The Committee on Appropriation reports one bill with a favorable recommendation. Oh, wait. Moves that the rules of council be suspended to permit the first reading this day of the bill that was just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bill just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committees with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar, numbers 241120, 241121, 241122, 241123, 241125, and 241126. The following resolution on the calendar is being held, 241117.
Is there a second?
I got it.
Counsel will be at ease.
My apologies for this error. For the record, resolution number 241117 will be on the regular calendar for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a second on that motion? It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolution numbers just read by councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. The chair again recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars, numbers 240871, 241054, 241055, 241058, 241059, 241025, 241029, 241031, 241050, 241051, 241052, 241053, 241061, 241063, 240430, and 240932. The following bills on the calendar are being held, 241022, 241023.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bill numbers just read by councilmember Gilmore Richardson. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the bill consent agenda shortly. The chair recognizes councilman Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling on any additional bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you again, Mr. President. In addition to the bills and resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following bills and resolutions are on the second reading and final passage calendar for today, numbers 240888, 240889, 240986, 240834, 240964, 240612, 241062, and 241117. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held, 240724, 241097, 241098, 241099, 240963, 240427, 240817, 240304, and 240665.
Before considering the bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters of the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you're not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in an order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today's time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time. The light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I would now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
We have Shanika Moten. Oh, they're not. Excuse me. Reverend Kristen Ostendorf. May Reverend Philip Gelbeter, Eleanor Torrey, and Beth Hollingshead also make their way to the podium? Reverend Kristen Ostendorf, Reverend Philip Gelbeter, Eleanor Torrey, and Beth Hollingshead also make their way to the podium? We have Shane Kiefer, Gabrielle Gibson, and Brittany Frisbee also make their way to the podium?
Good morning, members of city council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on resolution number 240665. My name is Dr. Eleanor Torrey. I'm a researcher at the University of Pennsylvania and a wound care nurse in the city's Kensington neighborhood. Before I start, I would like to stipulate that my opinions expressed in this testimony do not necessarily represent those of the University of Pennsylvania Health System, School of Nursing, or Perelman School of Medicine. I'm testifying today in opposition of resolution number 240665, which I believe will have a detrimental effect on the patients I serve. I'd like to summarize the evidence showing the effectiveness of the essential public health services that mobile providers administer. The federal government recently recognized the importance of mobile care with street medicine billing codes, emphasizing the essential services that nurses and doctors provide in the community, meeting patients where they are. Harm reduction services that these mobile services provide are associated with 75% reduced drug use, three times likelihood of stopping injection altogether and entering treatment, and a dramatically reduced incidence of HIV and hepatitis C. Test strips can increase overdose safety. Mobile services offering sexual health services prevent the transmission of STIs and unwanted pregnancies. Finally, mobile services provide social services like clothing and food that brings humanity, dignity, and autonomy back into these people's lives. Many mobile providers assist with transportation and referrals to treatment. These are essential services that are keeping our communities safe. To address the concerns outlined in this bill, I would like to emphasize the importance of continuing to include all members of the community in discussions about solutions, being sure to include harm reduction advocates and people who use drugs. As you all know, engaging the community is key for success of public health initiatives. I would like to thank the council members for delaying this vote and for the opportunity to testify today.
Beth Hollingshead, Shane Kiefer, Gabrielle Gibson, Brittany Frisbee, Tamira Thomas, Jeremy Blattstein, Queen Judith Robinson, please make their way to the podium.
Thank you for hearing us today regarding resolution number 241121. I'm Gabrielle Gibson, one of Joe Frazier's grandchildren, and I stand along here with my cousins today as we speak regarding the importance of halting the demolition of our grandfather's gym. The Joe Frazier's Gym located at Broad and Glenwood, where Glenwood is now named Smoking Joe Frazier's Boulevard. It stood as a stomping ground for countless youth and aspiring athletes. It opened, it was opened by my grandfather in the seventies, who was an Olympic gold medalist and heavyweight champion of the world. The gym became a space where hard work, discipline, and dreams came together. The gym's doors were always open to anyone willing to put in the effort. It provided young people within and outside its neighborhood with a refuge from the challenges of city life, offering mentorship, structure, and a path to personal growth. Under the guidance of Joe Frazier and his team, many learned not only the art of boxing, but also the values of perseverance, respect, and confidence. Beyond training, future fighters thought the gym was a place where relationships were built and lives were changed. People came not just to train, but to belong, to feel part of something larger than themselves. My grandfather's presence and commitment inspired those in the community who were fatherless, mentally lost, and helped all understand the greatness that could be achieved through hard work and determination. Even after the gym's closure in 2008, its impact is still felt. Those who were there or trained often speak of the lessons they carried into their lives, whether they became professional fighters or not. The Joe Frazier's Gym remains a powerful example of how sports can uplift a community, offering hope, structure, and the belief that anyone can overcome their circumstances with the right support. In 2013, the building was nominated as a designated, was designated as a historic landmark by the Philadelphia Register of Historic Places. We all know it's a symbol the community grew to love, and it should continue to stand as a piece of history it once was. Thank you.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Brittany Frisbee, and today we gather because of legacy that goes beyond boxing, beyond championships, and beyond the ring, Joe Frazier's Gym. It was more than a training ground. It was a beacon of hope, discipline, and unity for the community. Nestled in the heart of Philadelphia, this gym became a home for dreamers and fighters alike, a place where determination was forged through sweat and grit. The gym welcomed everyone from aspiring champions to young kids seeking guidance and purpose. It wasn't just about throwing punches. It was about building character. Our grandfather taught life lessons alongside boxing techniques, resilience, respect, and the value of hard work and dedication. Inside those walls, people found mentors, friendships, and a sense of belonging that often extend far beyond the gym. It was family. Joe Frazier's Gym stood as a symbol of possibility. For so many, it was proof that no matter where you came from, with enough heart and dedication, you could rise above your circumstances. Though the gym is no longer active, its spirit lives on in every person who walks through its doors, and every story of triumph and the unwavering resilience of people it touched. It reminds us that greatness isn't just in titles. It's in the communities we inspire and the lives we change. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Before I begin, I wanted to thank the chambers for honoring my father, world champion Marvus Frazier, and our family. So thank you for that sentiment. My name is Tamira Frazier-Thomas, and I stand alongside my cousins to share final thoughts and comments regarding the demolition of the historical Smoking Joe Frazier's Gym. That building is simply not brick, concrete, and mortar, but a beacon that, as my cousins eloquently shared, empowered our community. Our grandfather truly believed that this city, our city, is truly one of brotherly love and sisterly affection. We too collectively embody that same sentiment, as the majority of us live, work, and support our beloved city. As our nation's first capital, visitors from around the world come to feel and embrace that spirit. That spirit of what? Being a champion. What message are we sending to the world to tear down a piece of that history? Where's the love in that? I'm not speaking of fictional characters that run through the city and up the art museum steps, but the person that actually did it. Smoking Joe Frazier could have gone to any city in America, but he chose Philadelphia. He recognized that this is where he was meant to be. Our city wrapped that love, that grit, that underdog spirit around him to help propel him to the next level. Our city believed in his dream, his passion, and his purpose. As we celebrate the 60th anniversary in which he won the gold medal for the United States of America, what did our grandfather do? He did what all Philadelphians do. He shared the loved, and he opened that gym. He understood that if one of us can make it, all of us can make it. In closing, I would like to leave you with a quote that our beloved grandfather often used. "There's no wrong way to do right, and there's no right way to do wrong. So do what's right." We humbly are asking that you do what's right. He believed in this city, and in return, we are now believing in you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. As we review the public comment list at the chair's discretion, I am respectfully requesting that everyone, please limit your comments to one minute so that we have the opportunity to hear from everyone who has signed up to provide public comment today, as I am just reviewing the list. Thank you very much.
Hello, city council. My name's Jeremy Blattstein. First off, happy birthday, Councilwoman Gaudier, from myself and Jude. Jude last night told me to wish you a happy birthday, so happy birthday. I'm here to speak on bill number, sorry, 241055. It's a zoning bill. It's a great bill that's going to rezone a piece of land in South Philadelphia. We're finally going to get some residential units built in South Philly. Comcast tried to stop it, just like they tried to stop the Sixers Arena bill, but we need these types of development to be built in the city of Philadelphia, except we don't need spot zoning. So the challenge is to rezone I-2 to IRMX or CMX-3, so that we don't one-off do these zoning bills here and there. The last thing I'll have to say is, raise your hand if you're at Septa to City Hall this morning. Zero. We got one, we got one week left, and the gracious councilman Jones is going to ride Septa with me next week, so we'll see. So thank you very much.
We have Queen Judith Robinson, May Kate Perez, Cara Cohen, Augusta DiRisotto, Herb Paul Birdsong, and Tahir Farid Tahir also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. Queen Judith Robinson here regarding 241097. I want to give a big shout-out to the Bulldogs, y'all. Simon Graz Bulldogs. So congratulations to you all. I am Judith Robinson, your senior class president, class of 8475. We're so proud of you all. Just want to give that shout-out real strong. And then regarding Joe Frazier's Gym, Joe Frazier was a good friend of mine. So regarding 241121, I just want to say that his statue is down in the stadium district Go take a look and take selfies, so we can prop that up and market that. In addition, but we need to be careful about Preservation Alliance of Greater Philadelphia. We do not want to have them come from a farduciary to a bully in that regard as they talk about preservation of this great property. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
I'm Kate Perez, speaking on businesses in our city that refuse to comply with federal arms transfer policies and the rulings of the International Court of Justice and the United Nations by continuing to sell weapons to an apartheid occupation. Israel has been bombing Syria for more than a decade and has only intensified over the past months as it invaded neighboring Lebanon, killing thousands of civilians and violating recent ceasefire agreements more than just one, more than 100 times in just one week. Indiscriminately bombing countries constitutes a threat to international peace, and allowing a genocidal regime to act unchecked is a threat to international security. This Christmas, while the Pope calls for investigations into Israel's genocide, you should all remember Reverend Dr. Munder Isaac. Munder Isaac, who came here in June, to tell us, "If Jesus was born today, he would be born under the rubble." As you buy gifts for your loved ones, consider what companies you are sustaining with your dollars. Stop shopping on Amazon. Don't buy their basics. Don't buy Google products if you know that they're partners in hosting and maintaining cloud services to keep Israel's deadly AI and surveillance projects intact with Project Nimbus. Don't buy the new iPhone when you know children in the Democratic Republic of the Congo are digging for cobalt with their bare hands, and the company itself builds illegal settlements at the price of Palestinian blood. No more McDonald's, no Burger King, no Papa John's, no Pizza Hut. Cancel your Disney Plus subscriptions. Stop getting gas at Chevron. Free Palestine.
We have Cara Cohen, Augusta DiRizzato, Paul Birdsong, Taher Farid Taher, and May David Jenkins also make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name is Augusta. I've been trying to address City Council concerning the arena for a couple days now. I wrote a couple of proposals, which I will give to the Sergeant of Arms, and I also emailed it to City Council, but the only person who emailed me back was Jamie Gunther. Considering the passing of the arena bills, I will be going to the Historical Commission, and if the Historical Commission refuses to recognize any land in Chinatown, I will file something, and we can, we can see what the Supreme Court opinion is on the matter. Because the National Preservation Act is a federal law, and it should be upheld. Thank you.
All power to the people. I want to say that 240966 was, for some reason, excluded from the paperwork over there that's being handed out. That's the bill. My name is Paul. Everybody knows my name. Leave me alone. It was already, it was, it was not on that paper over there, which is dishonest, because it is what is being discussed today and voted upon. Now, as far as that arena goes, right, there have been arenas built in two other cities that are comparable to Philadelphia, and those arenas were put in those cities, and they were told to the people, hey, this is going to improve the life of the people here because it's going to bring a lot of money. That one is Staples Center, and Los Angeles Downtown. Another is Comerica Park in Detroit. Now, when those arenas were built in those areas, they did bring money, but the crime kept going. Now, in Staples Center, right, you walk outside and you walk in the surrounding neighborhoods, you could be killed or robbed because gangs run those territories because no safety measures were taken to ensure the safety of the people despite the arena. Comerica Park, Detroit has, in Diamond Dell, Michigan, a forensics lab that's state-of-the-art. They have LED lights, cameras, they have triangulating microphones, right? The, 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 50, the largest decrease in homicides, the largest decrease in homicides in Detroit in 50 years because they did something to save people, not to bring money. You hear what I'm saying? You call them by their name, but you need a forensic lab. You need lights, you need cameras, you need triangulating microphones. The people are what's most important. You heard me.
Thank you.
The people are what's most important.
Thank you for your testimony.
I rise to speak to what seems a rudimentary lack of comprehension I take responsible for in part, but perhaps many of my fellow citizens and even members of this esteemed body are confused about the job those before me swore to uphold in an oath of office to their constituents, particularly today. I am a resident of Rittenhouse Square and apparently live in a community of affluence, noted as a persons who is not a stranger to the blessings of economic prosperity. Thusly, perhaps even conversely, it could hardly be said that I eschew opportunities for economic prosperity in our larger community. There is not a citizen in Philadelphia I have met in Chinatown or anywhere else who opposes the creation of a new and magnificent stadium for our beloved 76ers. That is to say, the unions and tradesmen want sustainable work, many institutions that support this city want it also. We are pro-reviolation, pro-rejuvenation. We all want a safe, healthy, and prosperous place to live. What is undeniable is that, as of this morning, 69% of the constituents of Philadelphia oppose the creation in this location. We stand, I'm reclaiming my time, we stand with a city once built upon a hill founded in 1682, restricted by a grid plan of international acclaim gifted to us by William Penn. So I will conclude by saying the following. Thomas Jefferson offers us a warning. Our forefathers were explicit. When the government fears the consequences of its decision on the people, there is liberty. When the people fear the consequences of the government in decisions on their lives, there is tyranny. So take the time to look at 230 North Broad, that would be Haneman Hospital, and take the time to look at the Delaware Waterfront, where the 76ers wanted to be originally.
We have Diamar Jeanette, Jonathan Geeding, Anlin Wang, May Quentin Frazier, Salvatore Sandone, and Philip Lockett Friedman also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. My name is John Geeding. I'm the Director of Policy and Advocacy for Build Philly Now, and I'm speaking today on behalf of Transit Forward Philadelphia, which is a coalition of 35 cross-sector, community-based organizations advocating for accessible, reliable, and sustainable public transportation, where I sit on the Executive Committee. Today, I'm speaking in support of Councilmember Johnson's Resolutions 241125, urging Pennsylvania State Senate Republicans and Senate Democrats to write and pass bipartisan legislation that will provide necessary funding for SEPTA. And also 241120, thanking Governor Josh Shapiro for flexing $153 million in federal highway funds to SEPTA. After this body passes resolution calling on the governor to flex funding, we were ecstatic to see him take action and announce the measure just one day later. And this bought SEPTA a few months, but as we know, it's going to take meaningful bipartisan engagement to pass a comprehensive transportation funding bill. So thank you to this body for doing your part, and that's a wrap. Thank you.
My name is Anlin Wang, here to testify on Bill 240966. I think I got that right. People have heard that this is a deal, a bad deal, for, for a billionaire to get a lot of money. But just how bad of a deal is it? How much money is Josh Harris, David Adelman really worth? Last year, Josh Harris was worth around $6 billion as his net worth, right? This year, his net worth has increased to around $11 to $12 billion. So that's pretty nuts. In a single year, this guy's net worth goes up by the size of the entire city of Philadelphia's entire operating budget. And yet, the CBA that this council has agreed to is less than the entire budget for the entire fleet program for the entire city, around the budget for the entire one-year's operating budget for, for the entire library system. This is a joke in the poorest big city in the country. Are you fighting for the people or not? Or are you fighting for billionaires? Right? You know the answer. There is not too late to reverse this bill. It has not gone through final passage. Do the right thing for the people, actually get something that benefits the people, instead of just robbing us and giving it to the richest people on this planet already.
We have Quentin Frazier, Salvatore Sandone, Philip Lockett Friedman, May Sakay Kikichi, Amanda Bowsard, and Jenny Zhang also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Salvatore Sandone. I am the founder, head martial arts teacher at ZhangSA Martial Arts and Learning Centers in Philadelphia. I'd like to thank Councilman Squilla and Councilman Jones for their ongoing support. We're here to talk about keeping Joe Frazier's Gym. There's not enough spaces in the city of Philadelphia where people go to better themselves that should be honored. It is one of the spaces that defines what it means to be a fighter from Philly, to be a fight in Phil. Places where people go and they sweat and cry and bleed, to do something good, to make themselves better, deserves to be preserved. Our organization is willing to help in any way possible, and thank you very much for your time.
We have Philip Lockett Friedman, Sakay Kikichi, Amanda Bowsard, Jenny Zhang, and Miguel Johnson, and Emily Goddard also make their way to the podium.
My name is Amanda Bowsard. I oppose Bill 240612, and I implore you to not vote yes to this bill today. My rights as a property owner are at stake, along with 364 other owners opposing who own properties going to be reassessed in this bid. We're going to give up the right to our facades through this bid, our sidewalks, the right to control the expense of managing our property, as well as the right to continued safe occupancy and use of it through this conservatorship tool that's built into the bid process. This is a terrible thing to do with as much opposition as we have, and it is definitely not in the letter of the statute that gives you the right to enact this BID, NID, whatever you want to call it. So I just want you to look closer at this and see that we have a right to a preliminary plan that includes a list of all assessed properties, not buried in a total bid plan, but a right to a specific list. And we can't get that, and we're still trying to parse through what is being used to determine the loss of our property rights.
My name is Philip Lockett Freeman, and I'm here to speak on Bill 24834. And I want to make sure you guys pass this bill, because the prison system been pumping out career criminals. This is our chance to get a hold of these boys. And we, we have to, when we grab them in the penal system, that's when we should put the program on them, so that when we let them out that prison system, they be ready to go into their own businesses in their communities. We got a chance to get them. If they get in this program that I'm going to introduce to Councilman Thomas, they can even get their time cut on their sentence, so that when they come out, they going directly into their own businesses, and they become alumni, so we don't have to keep parole and probation forever. These guys will keep coming back to be mentors for the other guys who made mistakes. And we need to start doing this now, because there's not much left of Philadelphia. Thank y'all.
We have Jenny Zhang, Miguel Johnson, Emily Goddard, and May Sergio Crea, Jake Rouse, and Obonahagans also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Lakai, President of District 3. I'm here to speak in opposition of Bill 240963. This morning, the committee of the whole voted forward, an embarrassingly bad deal on an arena that threatens the existence of Chinatown and all of Center City, in exchange for a CBA that sets a terrible precedent for development in every neighborhood in Philadelphia. And this is the result of a process that shut out community and was rushed through at the behest of billionaires, who are now bragging to their investors that they will make an additional $100 billion on their properties south of Market Street through the new HBSC Real Estate Group, and will pay a mere $2 million per year to the community, while the schools face a funding deficit and we're in the midst of school closure hearings. Removing the arena from the Tiff District will result in a net loss to the school district over the next 30 years, unless by some miracle, it generates an unprecedented number of additional events. There's also still no plan for SEPTA. Philly relies on SEPTA, and this plan is a threat to it. The city deserves so much more for every single neighborhood and for Chinatown. And I want to thank Councilmembers O'Rourke, Brooks, Young, Landau, and my district council member, Jamie Gauthier, for their votes on this. You still have a chance to vote no next week, and I urge you all to do so.
My name is Jenny Zhang. I am speaking in opposition to 240963. I live in Chinatown, and I go to church in Chinatown. Thank you to the council members, Gauthier, Landau, Young, and O'Rourke, who voted against the shameful sellout deal this morning. To the rest of you, how dare you? $60 million? How dare you sell our beautiful city for a measly $60 million? Is that what our city is worth to you? You should be embarrassed, going from $50 million to $60 million. Never have I ever seen such poor negotiating. Shame. You, you sold us out without even knowing the true financial costs and potential liabilities to the city. You are selling out our city for the next 30 years. Traffic management, police overtime, infrastructure, water, sewage, transit, no one has any idea. Our schools are expecting a $55 million deficit next year. We deserve better. I love Philadelphia, and every day, I actually pray for all of you as leaders of our city. I pray that God give you wisdom and a heart for justice, and I want to read a verse from Jeremiah 22:3, that has really been on my heart these past couple months. Thus says the Lord, "Do justice and righteousness, and deliver from the hand of the oppressor him who has been robbed; and do no wrong or violence to the resident alien, the fatherless and the widow, nor shed innocent blood in this place. Do what is right, moral, and just. Be bold and brave, and stand up for your constituents who live here and love this city." You sold us out, just like Judas sold out Christ for 30 pieces of silver, except you sold us out for even less than that. Make it right. Stop this deal. The people of Philadelphia are at least owed that much.
We have Miguel Johnson, Emily Goddard, Sergio Sea, Jake Rouse, Obonahagans, and May Perry-Lol and John Chin also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Majul K. Johnson-Hudson. Majul, it's a J, not a G. Majul K. Johnson-Hudson. And Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, members of council, I'm profoundly disappointed, pointed at the resolutions passed for the arena hina today. Hey, like my colleagues, I thank those who had the courage to vote against it. This city has been a city founded, hounded, hounded as a place of refuge. My own family, like many of your own, came to this city, a city fleeing the Ku Klux Klan in the 1920s and 30s, 30s, 30s. Yet, here we see a city that once again, and supposed to be a historic city, supposed to be a World Heritage City, selling out another historic neighborhood, new neighborhood. When will we learn that our history is an asset, not a burden? A burden. Then, these people here, who here, the people who have come from Chinatown and from across the city, from the city, have come to them, to have come to you, their representatives, in this building, the building, building that is the largest municipal government building on earth. You sit in splendor, but you make a decision, decision of cowardice. Please, 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 reverse this order, and actually, may stand for the people of Philadelphia.
Hi, my name is Emily Goddard, and I'm speaking in opposition to Bill 240963. We know that a city block that is dark 270 days per year and most hours of every day will not be a thing that draws people to Market East, to spend their time, money, and build business. The arena is not going to enliven Market Street, and let's stop pretending that this proposal has anything to do with what is good for our city. Over two years ago, Councilmember Squilla went with Chinatown community members to see what used to be DC's Chinatown. As they walked in the arena district, they saw desolate, empty streets and vacant storefronts. It wasn't just Chinatown businesses that were thriving, or that weren't thriving there. It was chain stores and mainstream businesses that were shuttered. And Councilman Squilla said, "We don't want to see this in Philly. No one wants to see this in Philly." And yet, here we are, and we don't even need to go to DC to understand the impact the gigantic structure designed for periodic influxes has on the experiences of people in our city. We only need to look at the convention center, which was built over a string of black gay bars gentrifying the neighborhood. Let's not pretend that the arena is a good idea.
Everyone, my name is Sergio Sea. I use LHEHIM pronouns on the political director of Reclaim Philadelphia, board member of Liberty City, LGBT Dems, and a supporter of no arena gaborhood. This CBA is a shame. I had more hope for City Council. I thought that you would do what the Parker administration failed to do, and actually stand up for our communities, or at least try to negotiate for a benefit that would, okay, CBA that actually benefits us. This CBA excludes Chinatown from meaningful benefits. There is virtually no provision for SEPTA, and we know that SEPTA said that this is going to cost them 20 to 25 millions per year. It's going to lead to disruptions of services in our neighborhoods. I want to lift up the folks that voted against this, like Jamie Gauthier, because she has seen how David Adelman destroyed UC townhomes in her district. I want to lift up Jay Young, who knows that, that Josh Harris has built his wealth gentrifying black neighborhoods in Sharsworth in his district. This is something that will only benefit billionaires, and we could and we could have negotiated for way more. We could have done this while schools are going to be closed. Mayor Parker said, "We can't be ashamed to say out loud that we're going to be closing schools." You could have fought for us. You could have fought for the city, and there's still time for you to change and stand up for us. We will remember this vote.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Jake Rouse. I've been a Philadelphia resident for six years, and I live in Old City. Mark, I am one of your constituents, so I hope I have your attention. I oppose Bill 240963. Last night, I spent four hours at Mayor Parker's Arena Town Hall at McCall. In her opening remarks, I was deeply appalled by the political philosophy of my mayor. She stated repeatedly over the course of the night that she would not let the anger of her constituents filter her decision about this deal. She told the story of her family buying a home and the pride that it brought, and likened it to the 76ers, saying, "We don't want to rent anymore. We want to own." And to her own family's success, and that, who is she to tell them that they can't buy? That is all of your jobs. This is corporate personification. We have seen since Citizens United, a push to make boards of executives feel like people, and their interests are equal to ours. They are not. Mayor Parker hammered home the idea that to help people from being reliant on their government, we need to do this. I would like to argue that we need to make our new mission to stop our government from being so reliant on the private sector. Thank you.
Obonahagans, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 240427, which addresses amendments to the Philadelphia Code. In the spirit of this particular bill amendment, I want to address Executive Order 6-23, which was signed in 2023 and aimed to implement race-based planning and budgeting in Philadelphia. However, the U.S. Supreme Court ruling in Students for Fair Admissions versus Harvard has made such race-based measures unconstitutional, meaning the executive order is now nonconforming with federal law. Meaning, we urge Mayor Parker to rescind this executive order based on a violation of the Harvard case. And one more thing. How dare Chinatown want all this attention? Nobody came to the American Freedmen community and asked us, "Could you come and exploit our communities for the last 50 years?" Nobody asked that. Who's standing up for the American Freedmen who are being exploited the way the Asian-Chinese Chinatown seem like they're being exploited? How dare them?
Perry Law, John Chin, and May Wick Savage, Mort Chuck, and Sultan Smalley also make their way to the podium.
Hello. My name is Perry Law. I oppose 240963. I've worked as a youth educator for the past four years, working as an art teacher at McCall Elementary School in Squillough's district, and now as a youth educator for high school students across the city. I want you to look at my students in the eye and explain to them why you have chosen the desires of billionaires, corporate developers, over their futures. I want you to look them in the eye and explain to them why their elected council members do not represent the vast majority of the city who are opposed this proposed arena. Explain to them why our voices do not matter. I was at the mayor's town hall last night, and she compared the 76ers wanting to build this arena to Philadelphians wanting to buy a home instead of renting. Does that same comparison apply to all the families that call Chinatown home that my students live in? I talked to you. Do you? Have they told you their fears of their parents' businesses shutting down, unable to afford their homes they've lived in for years, forced to move out of their communities their families have lived in for generations? Just because gentrification is happening across Philadelphia and kicking families out of their homes does not mean that you can continue this anti-working-class trend in Chinatown. This is appalling status quo. Chinatown is home. Are you going to be there for our children when they want to move out of their homes after Chinatown is destroyed? Because I will be. Our community will be there. They are old enough to know when harm is done to them and their city. They will not forget. They will be able to vote you out when you're all up for reelection. They are our future. I care about the youth of the city. Do you?
My name is John Chin. I'm the executive director of the Philadelphia Chinatown Development Corporation, known as PCDC. I'm here testifying in favor of a bill entitled, Empowering Communities for Cultural Preservation and Community-controlled Development. This bill is more important than ever after today, this morning's votes. And we need to tackle the problem of inequity and unaffordable housing across the city now. So the bill supports the mission and work of community development nonprofits like PCDC and their strategy to prevent displacement of residents and small, local mom-and-pop businesses in neighborhoods facing gentrification pressures. The Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia reported 75% of low-income renters are cost burden in 2022. The city has several thousand market rate units coming online in the next two years. The environment has not been favorable to low-income residents for a long time. Affordable housing production is not keeping up with the demand, and our city is doing its best to increase affordability and prevent displacement. This includes community development corporations, which continue to build affordable housing. City council has passed numerous tools to prevent displacement of homeowners and renters. This bill will deliver more affordability and abate residents' housing cost burdens. Thank you.
We have Wick Savage, Mort Chuck, and Sultan Smalley. May Madeline Smith, Michael Pao, Zamil, Cooper Kidd also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, council members. My name is Wick Savage. I agree and support the bill for the 76ers' place 110%. I have family members throughout every council member district. I do control a large block of voters, and they are following my wishes. I will say to you, I commend the tough job that you all have had to take on for this matter. Whether you was for it or against it, you need to be commended for that first because it's not easy. Let's move forward with our leadership and our mayor to get this part of the city of Philadelphia in the future. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sultan Smalley, and I am a student at the Community College of Philadelphia and a member of the Philadelphia Chapter of the Sunrise Movement. I live in Frankfurt in the Lower Northeast, and I'm here to oppose this sellout arena proposition. So estimations show that the arena could cost the city up to $1 billion in lost tax revenue. Yet nearly two dozen libraries and 63 schools closed this past summer because they lacked adequate AC. City council must get its priorities straight and remember who you serve because 70% of Philadelphians do not support subsidizing a billionaire's playground while our children's playgrounds go underfunded. We need full investment into our parks, rec centers, libraries, schools, and public transit. But that won't happen if the elected officials who purport to represent us impose austerity on its citizens for the sake of lining the pockets of greedy, union-busting billionaires who don't give a damn about the people in this city. From UC Townhomes to the Bellwether District to Chinatown, corporate developers have been allowed to run amok in our city, and it is the black, brown, and working-class citizens who make this city move and who are the first to be displaced by these acts of aggression. So I stand here in solidarity with the residents of Chinatown, Washington Square West, and the workers at Jefferson to resist this corporate giveaway. Standing against the will of the people is shameful, and any politician who thinks they can get away with this, continuing to vote for this arena will find out in 2027 because the people won't forget. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Matt Shuck. I'm a resident of Philadelphia. Go Birds! Fun fact. By the time we play Sunday, Josh Harris will have earned back the entire amount of this CBA into his pocket. In 1899, the United States invaded the Philippines and committed unimaginable atrocities to bring it into our economic sphere of influence. Trade unions supported that war as it would create a market for surplus goods and new jobs in their trades. Today, we are faced with an invasion of the Chinatown district on behalf of interests who claim the benefits will go to the hard workers of our building trades. But history has shown that that is not the case. Opposition to this arena eclipses opposition to that atrocious war in 1899. And yet, city council is determined to proceed with this invasion. We condemn those who manufactured consent to that war. And in 2027, the city of Philadelphia will condemn you, city councilors, in the same way. Thank you.
We have Madeline Smith, Michael Pao, Zamil, Cooper Kidd, May Vivian Chang, Ramin Fleet, Nadira Griffin, and Griselle Garati also make their way to the podium.
Hello. My name is Madeline Smith. I am a member of, well, I'm an alumnus of the final class of University of the Arts. And it sucks that Mark Squillough just left the room because he came and took a photo with us saying that he would stand with us in the preservation of arts and community in the city. And I am so sad to see the destruction of all of the places where people gather. This is why we must support the halt demolition of Joe Frazier's gym, and we must oppose the arena unequivocally. This... There are no places in Philadelphia for people to be people anymore. There's, and the city council keeps opposing and destroying places where we come together. There's a desire to drive tourism and increase that. There's $10 million that were given to a cleaner and greener park on the Avenue of the Arts. But without people, without students, without artists, without the community together, there is nothing that creates any reason for tourists to come to the city. It is us that create it. It is us. We are the artists, and we are the creators. Free Palestine.
My name is Michael Paschus-Simien. To those of you who voted in favor of the construction of arena, shame on you for selling out your political power to these developers. We are seeing a pattern of developers destroying the city and displacing entire communities like Chinatown and the students of U-Arts. 1,300 students were displaced and 700 employees were let go in a matter of seven days. People are suffering in this city. Black and brown babies are dying in these streets. People are going homeless, unfed, cold in the winter. And Jerel Parker is displacing them from their tents and not allowing them to live peacefully. I want you guys to go to bed, and I want you guys to think about the people. People are being restless, and they are angry. And you guys will see justice.
Hi. My name is Cooper Kidd, and I live in Rinn House Square. Hello. My name is Cooper Kidd. I'm here to talk about Bill 240963. I'm a PhD student in public health at Drexel, and I've been here all week during finals because of how important this issue is to me. In one of my classes, we discussed commercial determinants of health and their negative consequences. The opposed 76ers arena was discussed in this class, on this topic, and how commercial determinants of health, such as corporate greed, can negatively impact health outcomes for all communities involved. Who is to say corporate greed won't allow the developers to continue to push council to continue to amend the district to fit their needs, just as they bought out so many members today? Stand up for the health and well-being of Philadelphians. Remember that you are at-will employees, at the will of the people who vote for you. Asian-Americans have historically overcome every obstacle presented. What makes you think this will be different? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ramin Fleet. I'm speaking in opposition to Bill Number 240963. I know I might be the youngest in the room right now and may not have that much knowledge, but I know the difference between right and wrong. I just wanted to say, how can you destroy the last community of colors in Center City for the 6ers? They're not even doing so great this season or the last few seasons. I grew up in Philadelphia my whole life, and it was an honor growing up in Philadelphia. I love basketball myself, but I can't support the 6ers having a stadium in the heart of the city when they don't even know how to support their own community. There's still time for you to stand up for what's right with the people and against the billionaires.
My name is Vivian Chang. I live in Chinatown North in Councilmember Schools District. Not sure where we went again. District. Not sure where we went again. You all know, we have tens of thousands of people in every council district across the city who are against the arena. You all know, this morning's vote, a sellout, literal pennies, embarrassing capitulation, terrible leadership, a waste of so many months. For what? So that these corporate developers could make fun of us again? Could embarrass Philly again? Where was the power in this room? Where was the courage to stand up for anything? For our people, for the reputation of the city? Like, these owners, they do not care about any of us. And yeah, they're here to make money off the backs of regular people. So don't say you represent our people, and especially, you know, these communities that are being shit on. Empty words are meaningless. There is nothing that is going to protect Chinatown if this arena goes through, and you are what keeps Philly poor when you vote for this arena.
We also have Nadira Griffin and Griselle Garati.
Hi, my name is Griselle Garate, and I am speaking to oppose anything having to do with an arena in Center City. There are so many things that have already been said. I don't need to repeat them. My question is simple, though, and I do just want to say real quick thank you to all of you who voted no on this and used your common sense. I appreciate you, and so does the rest of Philadelphia. Anyways, you're public servants, right? Again, public servants, right? So if that's the case, then why are you serving the billionaires? I'm just curious. Why are you allowing the billionaires to profit from the constituents that you're supposed to represent in Philadelphia and leave the constituents of Philadelphia poorer and less represented, which is, again, your job? Why are you, why are the Sixer, what are the Sixers actually, because I just saw my little buzzer? What are the Sixers giving y'all that is making this worth you saying yes? What are the Sixers giving y'all that is making you betray the trust and support of the constituents that you said you were going to represent? That's my question. We're watching y'all, and next time we got a vote, we're going to remember all of you guys' trust.
Hi, my name is Nadira Griffin. I am the Philadelphia Community Ambassador at Large for the Councilmatic District. What, and I am here speaking on behalf of 240964. We, as a former teacher for the Philadelphia School District and a mental health, drug, and alcohol therapist, we, the people, we do not, I repeat, we do not support the arena, and we do not support, and we do not support the city of Philadelphia being authorized, the ordinance giving the city of Philadelphia the ordinance to authorize or organize the arena service district. It is displacing families, and although the Asians do not speak, stand with us freedmen and us melanated kings and queens, I do stand with them because I know what it feels like to be displaced. Chinatown has been, Chinatown has been part of the history of Philadelphia, and it should remain our history. You're taking that away from us. I remember going to Chinatown as a child, and my favorite food restaurants are not there. This causes mental health issues for individuals. If you can't, we, the school district of Philadelphia had schools, wait a minute. Wait, no, I'm not finished. I'm the last one. That's okay, I'll keep speaking. We have schools that have improper ventilation systems. We need our money from the Parking Authority to build better schools for our children. I heard that you all are providing safety, safety for the...
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes public comment for today. Thank you. We will now consider today's resolution Consent Agenda. I will ask the clerk to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passage calendar. The clerk will now read the titles of the resolutions on the consent agenda.
Resolution 241120, a resolution thanking Governor Josh Shapiro for flexing 153 million in federal highway funds to SEPTA. Resolution 241121, a resolution calling on the Department of Licenses and Inspections to halt any potential demolition plans to the iconic Joe Frazier's Gym on North Broad Street, and calling on the City of Philadelphia, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Preservation Alliance for Greater Philadelphia, and all other associated parties to identify alternative uses for Joe Frazier's Gym. And Resolution 241122, a resolution thanking SEPTA for expanding its high fare gate pilot program to combat fare evasion by installing 100 full-length fare gates at nine SEPTA stations across the city of Philadelphia. And Resolution 241123, a resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Attorney General to investigate building code requirements affecting community-based housing and to provide strategies to ensure equitable, inclusive, and accessible housing for people with disabilities. And 241125, a resolution urging Pennsylvania State Senate Republicans and Senate Democrats to write and pass bipartisan legislation that will provide necessary funding for SEPTA. And Resolution 241126, a resolution approving the reappointment of Deborah McCarty to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Storm Rate Board. Those are the resolutions on the Consent Agenda, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the Resolution Agenda, Consent Agenda.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that each of the resolutions on the Consent Agenda be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the Consent Agenda has been adopted. We will now consider today's bill Consent Agenda. I will ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the bills on the Consent Agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the Consent Agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on our regular second reading and final passage calendars. The clerk will now read the titles of the bills on the Consent Agenda.
Bill Number 240871, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Metairie Avenue, Park Avenue, and Godfrey Avenue. And Bill Number 241054, an ordinance amending Section 14-520 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Ninth District Overlay District by reorganizing existing requirements and requiring special exceptions for certain uses in designated areas all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241055, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Packer Avenue, Seventh Street, Patterson Avenue, and Darian Street to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding Section 14-541 entitled Packer Avenue Overlay District and making other related changes all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241058, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Oxford Street, Cadwellard Street, Jefferson Street, Germantown Avenue, and Fourth Street. And Bill Number 241059, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Erie Avenue, Ninth Street, Hutchinson Street, Ontario Street, Sedgley Street, Sixth Street, Glenwood Avenue, and Broad Street. And Bill Number 241025, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to convey to the Philadelphia Housing Authority all or part of a parcel or parcels of land containing approximately 23,595 square feet located in and about the area bounded by Market Street, 39th Street, Ludlow Street, and 40th Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241029, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation, or otherwise, in and to all or portions of certain parcels of land located along the west bank of the Schuylkill River in and around an area generally bounded by South 58th Street as extended to the bulk headline of the west bank of the Schuylkill River, South 61st Street, and West Pachianke Avenue for public park, recreation, and transportation purposes under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241031, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1 South Broad Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241050, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into various lease and sublease agreements with various landlords and tenants for use by the city of all or a portion of various premises located at 1835 South Broad Street, 6,000 Woodland Avenue, 4029 Market Street, 5610 Lancaster Avenue, 2301 North Broad Street, 6420 Frankfurt Avenue, 2739 North Fifth Street, 53, 61 through 912 Avenue, 6233 North Broad Street, and 1619 Grant Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241051, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation, or otherwise, in and all to, in to all or portions of certain parcel of land known as 923 West Butler Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241052, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1600 through 26 John F. Kennedy Boulevard, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241053, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 30 South 15th Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 241061, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 383, 384, 385, and 386 by relocating portions of the house lines and curb lines of Southampton Road from the Roosevelt Boulevard to points northwestwardly therefrom, relocating portions of the easterly house line and the curb lines of Southampton Byberry Road from the Roosevelt Boulevard to points southeasterly and southwardly therefrom, and relocating portions of the curb lines, the Roosevelt Boulevard from Southampton and Southampton Byberry Roads, to the Philadelphia Bucks County Line, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 241063, an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to create smart loading zones and camera-based enforcement systems for designated parking violations, revise the procedures for identifying and handling stolen vehicles prior to towing, amend the parking violation subject to towing, and make related technical changes all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240430, an ordinance amending various provisions of the Philadelphia Code to authorize revisions of various fees by regulation, including license and permit fees under Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, license fees for food establishments under Title VI, the Health Code, license and permits under Title IX, Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, license under Section 10-722, use of dumpsters, license under Section 11-610, construction equipment, and license under Chapter 19-600, amusement tax, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240932, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-4100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Promoting Healthy Families and Workplaces to modify the manner in which certain leave benefits are administered during a pandemic or epidemic and making technical changes all under certain terms and conditions. There are no further bills on the Consent Agenda, Council President.
Thank you very much. These bills have been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the clerk please call a roll? And upon being called, each councilmember shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which they are voting nay. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Young.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Scola.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye on all bills.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye on all bills. The majority of all the members having voted affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the Consent Agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240888?
Resolution Number 240888, a resolution appointing Rick Carrion to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding the resolution Number 240888.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the resolution Number 240888 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240889?
A resolution reappointing Howard Wurzoff to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240889.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the resolution Number 240889 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240986?
A resolution appointing Gary Brandeis to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240986.
I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the resolution Number 240986 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240834?
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation of the Philadelphia Prison Community Oversight Board and the Office of Prison Oversight, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move me adopt the amendments on this resolution. Just to be clear, colleagues, it's just the amendments.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the amendment to Resolution Number 240834 be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been amended. This resolution will be placed on our final passage calendar for our next session of council. The clerk will please read the title of Resolution Number 241117.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Crystal Tan, a beloved colleague and employee, for her tenure as a valued staff member in the office of Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. upon her retirement.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 241117.
With mixed emotion, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the resolution Number 241117 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to be recognized as aye on all bills on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you very much. It will be duly noted. The clerk will please read the title of Bill Number 240964.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia to organize an authority to be known as the Arena Special Services District Authority pursuant to the terms of the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Scola for a motion on the resolution, on the bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf, on your behalf, I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 240964. Copied amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the amendment to Bill Number 240964 will be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240612?
An ordinance continuing the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District in the area that generally includes both sides of Frankfurt Avenue, from the west side of Delaware Avenue to the southwest side of Lehigh Avenue, both sides of North Front Street from the north side of Poplar Street to the south side of Diamond Street, both sides of East Dorard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue continuing to the west side of East Burke Street, the north side of West Dorard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue to North Second Street, and the south side of West Dorard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue to Howard Street, and certain blocks of streets that intersect portions of these streets, approving an extension of the boundaries of the district to include North Front Street from Montgomery Street to Diamond Street, East Dorard Avenue from East Fletcher Street to East Burke Street, and the north side of West Dorard Avenue from Front Street to North Second Street, continuing the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation as a Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for and report concerning the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District Incorporated relating to the district and reauthorizing the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District Incorporated to assess property owners within the district, a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act and under certain terms and conditions.
This bill has been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Aye.
Councilmember Scola.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye, the ayes are sixteen. The nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 241062?
An ordinance amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14-502 entitled Center City Overlay District and 14-702 Floor Area Height and Dwelling Unit Density Bonuses and creating Section 14-502 entitled Philadelphia Chinatown Overlay District and making related changes all under certain terms and conditions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Scola for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 241062. A copied amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendments.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the amendment to Bill Number 241062 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. We will now have consideration of privileged resolutions. Will the clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing January 2025 as National Mentoring Month and honoring the contributions of Philadelphia's mentoring organizations, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion on the resolution.
For our young people, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated on its 111th Founder's Day, introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of all the members of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, including the president of the new Sigma chapter here in Philadelphia, David R. Richardson, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Majority Leader also appropriations Chairman Jordan Harris, correct? Okay, thank you very much. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on its 105th Founder's Day, introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you again for the street renaming for our triumphant founder, Arizona LaDonia Cleaver Stemmons. On behalf of all the members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in properly. Seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Isabella Izzy Fitzgerald, a lifelong advocate and former state representative in the 203rd House District of Pennsylvania, introduced by Council- A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Isabella Izzy Fitzgerald, a lifelong advocate and former state representative in the two hundred and third House District of Pennsylvania introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I'll give further remarks on the floor, but right now I just move for the adoption of the resolution.
You can do your remarks right now, Councilmember Thomas.
I'll hold off, Council President, because I know other members are going to want to speak on it as well, too. So with that being said, thank you for the flexibility. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Officer Bernard Bernie Turner, badge number four five four four for his exemplary service in light of his retirement from the Philadelphia Police Department introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moving properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the extraordinary legacy and groundbreaking achievements of Richard Anthony Dick Allen, a Philadelphia Phillies legend and trailblazing African-American baseball player, as he receives his long overdue induction into the National Baseball Hall of Fame, class of twenty twenty five, introduced by Councilmember Harity on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity for a motion on the resolution.
I enthusiastically asked for the resolution to pass.
Good job. Thank you. It has been moving properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Good job, Councilmember Harity. It's been a long time coming for that induction. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing November twenty twenty four as American Diabetes Month in support of those battling the disease and acknowledging the structural conditions that lead to disparities in affected populations and available care introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The Chair recognizes Minority Whip O'Rourke for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a word from the minority today, and today that word actually is anchor. As you all know, I just released a, or just moved for the passage of a resolution for National Diabetes Month. I wanted to state that it was initially scheduled for November. We are obviously in the month of December, and so obviously there's an issue there. But I wanted to just say that, you know, beneath the resolutions that we write and the motions that we advance are the lives and the values that give spirit to the lawmaking that we do in this chamber. And the lived experiences of our citizens and fellow human beings matter here. And so it's important to not be abstract, but personal, intimate, so we never lose sight of where the rubber meets the road. These sorts of things anchor the work that we are doing. I wanted to share, in light of National Diabetes Month, that this resolution recognizes November twenty twenty four as American Diabetes Month in support of those battling with the disease and reminds Philadelphians of the everyday steps they can take to reduce the possibility of developing diabetes. A few facts. Twenty-two-year-old Rashawn Chambers passed away in April twenty twenty one from complications associated with diabetes ketoacidosis. Chambers was a pre-trial detainee incarcerated at CFCF. He called for help over twenty-four hours before anyone checked on him. He directly told PDP staff that he was having difficulties breathing and requested to be taken to the infirmary. Nobody was worried until they found him unresponsive. From there, he was rushed to the hospital. After nine days of treatment, Rashawn passed away from complications of diabetic ketoacidosis. Louis Young Jr. was a man with type one diabetes who died last November in CFCF after being deprived of insulin for six days. Young left behind three sons and a grandbaby. He was also struggling with diabetes, diabetic ketoacidosis, and was hospitalized multiple times after arriving in the facility in December twenty twenty one. Days before his death, his blood sugar was dangerously high, and he told a nurse that he hadn't received insulin for three days. He wasn't hospitalized or placed in the infirmary despite needing to be hospitalized, placed in the infirmary for urgent care. His family recently filed actually a lawsuit against the city, the former prisons commissioner, the former one, and the jails for profit medical provider, YesCare. Both medical providers for the facilities Young and Chamber were incarcerated in have a history of medical neglect, and those providers are rightly faced with more than a thousand lawsuits alleging substandard care. Because people with diabetes of all types are protected under the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, as people with disabilities. Because this protection extends to state prisons also, I wanted to make sure that we did not forget about our incarcerated constituents who are also impacted by diabetes and their families. The Young family couldn't actually be here today. It was part of the reason why we actually waited to move this. But I want to read some words that they sent to our office into the record, and I want all of us on council to listen and understand this is just another example of the crisis in our prisons while we're talking about Diabetes Month, which has harmed countless Philadelphians. Hear these words. "We cannot wrap our heads around letting someone lay there suffering to die." "We want to let everyone know how inhumane this whole situation is." "No one else should have to go through what his three sons are going through." It has made us all look at this whole world differently. "We are filing this lawsuit to demand justice for the father of three boys, the eldest of which is completely physically disabled and dependent on assistance to meet his daily needs." "It is absolutely clear that the jails are not safe." "And according to our government, everyone should receive health care." With that, Mr. President, again, I just want to draw our attention to the lived experiences and the real human experiences that undergird the lawmaking, the resolutions that we pass, the motions that we make in this body, and keep it, and that it would anchor us to the work so that we can bring about material improvement in the lives of working people every single day in Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I just want to briefly remind individuals that this Sunday, myself and Councilmember Isaiah Thomas are hosting a street renaming at the West Oak Lane Charter School for the Honorable Isabella Fitzgerald. She's known as Miss Izzy, and she is a delight and joy, was a delight and joy in our neighborhood. The street renaming ceremony is going to be from two to four P.M. on Sunday, December fifteenth. We're inviting everyone to come out again to the West Oak Lane Charter School, right there off of Washington Lane and Sten. And lastly, also, I just want to really note really quickly that myself and state rep Anthony Bellman and Local ninety-eight will be hosting a miracle on Fifth Street. It's going to be an incredible time. We're going to have a holiday concert, followed by the holiday concert for residents. There will be a toy giveaway with some refreshments, so it's going to be live holiday cheer on Saturday, December twenty first from three to four thirty at Saint Paul's Lutheran Church located at fifty-nine eighteen North Fifth Street. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone there, so just wanted to plug that in. And just real briefly, I'll share the rest of my remarks on Sunday for Isabella Fitzgerald. What a wonderful woman. She was someone who really, when I started on council and I started talking about why I was here for our children, she said that message resonated with her, and she was encouraged by what I was saying, and she kept telling me that, hey, keep going, keep going, you're doing well, and gave me advice when I really needed it, just really always supportive and always there for you. And I also, you know, supported her, you know, that's how we met, you know, and when she was running for state rep. And it's just, I've cried a number of times already, but I'm going to miss her in West Oak Lane, and our community is going to miss her as well. So looking forward to seeing everyone on Sunday if you're able to stop by with Councilmember Thomas and I. Thank you.
Thank you very much. She'll be sorely missed. Very beautiful woman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to speak on the bill that I just introduced today to create a community land trust, the Chinatown Land Trust. Chinatown is a unique cultural and historical community that is part of the fabric of Philadelphia. Because we know for a fact that Chinatown would be impacted by the proposed Sixers Arena, we need to do what we can very proactively to preserve cultural heritage, promote long-term housing affordability, and support local businesses. That is why I introduced a bill today to establish a community land trust. It would be, it would provide a right of first refusal that empowers the local community to guide the economic development, preserve affordability, and maintain cultural integrity. The right of first refusal established in this bill only applies to publicly owned properties within Chinatown. My bill would also require PCDC to develop a community engagement process that provides the residents and stakeholders the opportunity to provide feedback on property use and development priorities. This is a common sense measure that would ensure we live up to the promise of preserving Chinatown for the years to come. A second, I wanted to speak as the Chair of the Public Health Committee to offer my support for Councilmember Lozada's resolution to hold hearings on the Kensington Community Revival Plan. This plan is not just about resolving crises. It's about revitalizing a community, restoring hope, and ensuring that every resident of Kensington has the opportunity to thrive. This resolution is a critical step forward. It enables us to take a deep dive into the year-end report on KCR examining the impact and evaluating its success and areas for improvement. Through these hearings, we will investigate how the plan has addressed public health concerns like access to healthcare, substance abuse treatment, safe housing, and environmental remediation. Together, we can help Kensington reclaim its promise and potential, building a stronger, healthier Philadelphia for all. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the leader of the Kensington Caucus, Councilwoman Ketsi Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. As the years come into an end, I want to take a moment to look back at our city's efforts to restore and revitalize the Kensington neighborhood. This community has been the recipient of action and attention from local government that has not been seen in years. Council established a special committee which has broken down silos and fostered collaborating across district boundaries and fields of expertise. We've set into motion the construction of a comprehensive Marshall Plan built from community engagement, a report from the special committee hearings, an audit from the city, of city findings from the Controller's Office, and data and findings from changes to policies and procedures from the administration. Mayor Parker and her administration have made Kensington a top priority, and I'm grateful for her efforts. On her one-hundredth day in office, she unveiled a five-phase initiative called the Kensington Community Revival Plan, outlining seven key goals of establishing leaders and partners to secure the neighborhood and eliminate criminal activity. Critical questions about the efficacy of some measures and unsolved issues remain. By authorizing this hearing, we hope to find answers to these critical questions asked by members of this community and continue to get our house together as a local government. Further break down silos and operating as a unified front in addressing the challenges plaguing Kensington. In order to restore and uplift the Kensington community, all branches of government across each level of government must work together. This hearing is a renewal of our partnership and a step towards achieving the goals we have set for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. A couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke for his remarks today. I couldn't ask for a better partner as it relates to the work that's being done with the prison oversight legislation. I also want to thank all my colleagues for voting in favor of the amendments today. Looking forward to passing that legislation and addressing some of the stories that Councilmember O'Rourke talked about as it relates to lived experiences that people have, dealing with this injustice of mass incarceration. Council President, today I started my day with a heavy heart. For those who don't know, Philadelphia lost one of our heroes, one of our champions, Mr. Raheem Berry. Myself and my colleague, Councilmember Jamie Gaudier, despite it being her birthday, agreed to decide to host the family of Raheem, as well as the entire Mastery Shoemaker family who were able to actually come out here today to celebrate his life and his legacy. For those who don't know, Raheem unfortunately passed away on the way home from school. Raheem was the dean at Mastery Shoemaker, and not only did I know Raheem for a long time, Raheem's story really was personal to me and hit home to me. For those who don't know, I actually went to high school where my dad was the dean. So it's a very unique club to be in, where you go to school every day, where your dad is really the head honcho, right? And for Raheem to be the person that he was, and for his son and the entire Mastery community to have to experience what they had to experience, I thought it was only right, and I appreciate my colleague and all of the members of City Council for supporting the citation to stand with Raheem, Raheem's family, his wife Lisa, his son Raheem Jr., the principal, and the administration at Mastery to honor his life, his legacy, and to assure that his work continues, not just in support of his son, but in support of all of the young people across the city of Philadelphia that he coached and he mentored. And so for me, you know, for most of the day, I've just been lost for words, because it's not just, it's not just what he meant to the city. You know, Council President, your father, most of us on City Council are actually parents. This is a man who waked up every day and just served. He just worked. He just served. He never talked about his legacy. He never talked about doing it for anything else but for the people that he cared about, for the children that he was passionate about, and for him to pass away the way he did on his way home from doing what he loved, with loved ones with him in the car, is just heart wrenching. And so I appreciate us as a legislative body for, no matter all of the things that's going on and all of the things that we're responsible for. And I know people are going to talk about a lot of different things in speeches today. We always, no matter what, take the time to recognize and to honor the people in the city of Philadelphia who makes Philadelphia the great city that it is, and Raheem Berry and his wife Lisa and the entire Mastery Shoemaker family is definitely on that list. I also wanted to take a moment to just share one story, like Councilmember Phillips. I'm going to save most of my remarks for the street naming on Sunday, and Councilmember Phillips, I greatly appreciate you as a district council person for including me in that. I know that that's not the norm. But Isabel Fitzgerald was more than just a war leader and a state rep. Isabel Fitzgerald was my first, Isabel Fitzgerald was the first person in politics to love me. I don't have a traditional political background. You met me in two thousand and ten when I decided to run for city council, and I didn't even know what color tie meant Democrat at that time, let alone what the definition of a war leader was. So after I got my butt whipped in the two thousand and eleven race, one of the things I learned was you have to know who the war leaders are in the city of Philadelphia, and, you know, I'm running for office war leader, what the heck is that? I need people to vote for me. I don't know these war leaders. So clearly, you learned that lesson the hard way, and after I lost, I decided to listen to the advice of a lot of people and try to get to know my war leader. And it wasn't an easy journey to get to know my war leader. The Thomas name in the Northwest had a different reputation that wasn't necessarily reflective of this Thomas and the Thomas family. So folks in the Northwest were very reluctant about me and my intentions. And I had the opportunity to have breakfast with Miss Izzy one day and just talk to her about who I am and what I was looking to do. and just talk to her about who I am and what I was looking to do. And of course, that didn't work, right? And so Miss Izzy, she wanted to see me doing the work. And so after a little while of getting to know me, she appointed me to be a committee person in the 10th Ward. And, you know, if you don't know about the 10th Ward, folks, right? The 10th Ward does a lot of great works about election, but the people there care about the community. That's the RCO. 10th Ward meetings are about zoning issues. Ward meetings are about nuisance businesses. Ward meetings are about the violence and the children and cleaning up the neighborhood. And we couldn't ask for a better person to help lead our community than Miss Izzy. So I'll go more into depth on Sunday. But I did want to just put on the record that I truly love Miss Izzy. She's going to be greatly missed, and I myself would not be here without Miss Izzy. People ask me, you know, what changed between the first time you ran for office and the time I ran after that? Because even though I didn't win, I came a lot closer. And the biggest difference was my war leader was with me. And not only was she with me, she was willing to go to war for me. And that meant so much to me as a guy who decided to just run for office because I wanted to be the change that I wanted to see. And she believed in that story, and it didn't cost nothing more than that. I was just somebody who cared and willing to serve, and that was enough for her. And I'll never forget her for that. So I'm hoping folks can join myself and Councilmember Phillips on Sunday. And before Sunday, I actually have my third annual Councilmember Isaiah Thomas Basketball Showcase on Friday and Saturday. We'll have schools coming from all across the region, including New York and from the suburbs coming to Philadelphia to play against our public schools, both girls and boys' basketball. I'm super excited to host the young people. It's going to be a great day for families and for people to come convene and for us to put Philadelphia on display for the entire region to see what type of talent that we have. As I close out, Council President, I have to take a moment to just put on the record and thank the entire tech team, the sheriffs, the operational folks, and everybody behind the scenes who make things go. Clearly, there was a lot of activity here today. But what I think a lot of people don't realize was that this started on Monday. We had an Iron Man hearing on Monday that lasted a very long time, and I had to apologize to a lot of people for how that was handled. But there was no complaints from the tech staff. There was no complaints from the Sergeant of Arms, the sheriff, all of the folks who make council sessions happen. And a very special thank you to our stenographer, who I felt so bad for throughout the course of the process. Couldn't get a drink of water, couldn't get something to eat. But everybody on your staff, Council President, and all the people who work for us as members, you know, this has been a very, very taxing week on them, and I'm sure that has an impact on their family. And I'm pretty sure you tell them all the time, thank you, Council President. But just so they're hearing it from someone else, thank you all. Thank you, Council President. Basketball event is happening?
Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
That's right. That's my brother right there, right? Thank you, Councilmember Young. The Basketball Classic is going to be happening on Friday and Saturday at Mass School. The events will start Friday after school at 3:00 p.m., and will go until about 10 o'clock. And then we'll start Saturday at about 10 a.m., and we'll go until about 7 p.m. Thank you, Councilmember. I forgot to include that information. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Jay, you still like to be recognized? Let me get Councilmember Jamie, because she was next. Councilman Jamie Glatia, then Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to start by thanking Majority Whip Thomas for allowing me to participate in honoring Mr. Raheem Berry today. I didn't have the opportunity to know him in life, but everything that I've heard from the council member and his family tells me what a great man he was and what an impact his loss will have and what an impact his legacy will have on the city of Philadelphia. So thank you so much. I also wanted to talk about the University City Town Homes. Today, this body cleared another milestone in the quest to achieve justice at the University City Town Home site. We transferred nearly 20% of the former Town Homes property to the Philadelphia Housing Authority, who will rebuild at least 70 deeply and permanently affordable homes in a neighborhood of opportunity. I want to start by again thanking the former UC Town Homes residents for their activism, partnership, and perseverance. I look forward to keeping the former tenants in the driver's seat throughout the design and construction process and welcoming back those who want to return. This land transfer was only possible because we fought for and won the community's due, rewriting the status quo to prove that when affordable housing comes under threat, we are not powerless. When the UC Town Homes landlord announced their intention to bulldoze the property at the end of their government-subsidized affordable housing contract, naysayers told us there was nothing we could do about it. But instead of giving up, we dug in our heels and fought for the working families that have called this place home since it was known as the Black Bottom. It wasn't easy. Over the years, we have been working on this. We have faced obstacle after obstacle. I spent hours and hours in court with now-city solicitor Renee Garcia, fighting a lawsuit levied against the city and me in my personal and professional capacity and securing the land we just transferred, as well as a $3.5 million tenant fund, which as of earlier this fall had been distributed to all but one recipient. Most recently, City Council and the mayor worked together to deliver $14 million to fund the rebuilding at the site. Our activism proves that we can and must do more to preserve and expand deeply affordable housing in neighborhoods of choice across our city. We show that affordable housing belongs in amenity-rich communities like University City, where families can easily access family-sustaining jobs, good-quality schools, healthcare, and other essentials. Our work at the Town Homes is inspiring residents from every corner of Philadelphia to take a stand for affordable housing. Look no further than the mighty Fourth Council District and what happened at Brishalome. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Jones on that. The seniors that call Brishalome home locked arms to say no more to deplorable conditions and a private for-profit landlord taking advantage of them. And thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Jones, this crumbling but vitally important senior affordable housing development will be restored and preserved. Our work is far from over. Thousands more affordable homes are at risk of disappearing in the next decade. And so I encourage us to keep fighting, just like we did at the UC Town Homes, and stand up for the safe, stable, and affordable homes our constituents need for a successful life, healthy communities, and a vibrant Philadelphia. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting our efforts to save Joe Frazier's gym. Joe Frazier's gym is not just a North Philadelphia icon, but a Philadelphia icon in general. Joe Frazier is Philly's champion. He is our real-life Rocky Balboa that was mentioned by the family here today. He understood what life is like growing up in this city, making it, and coming back to give to your city. So I just want to thank my colleagues again and let the public know that we're going to do everything we can to save that iconic building and to restore its glory back on North Broad Street. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good job. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Again, a very happy birthday to my freshman fourth colleague, Councilmember Jamie Gaudier. This is just a reminder for all of our colleagues that today after council will be our annual holiday luncheon given by our president. So please join us directly after council in the caucus room. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson. That completes speeches for today. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, December 19, 2024, back to our regular scheduled program at 10 a.m.
It has been moving property second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, December 19, 2024 at 10 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much for your hard work and dedication.